Good evening. Welcome to the December 4th, 2017 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Baker lead us with the invocation. So if you would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, we give you thanks for this day and thanks for the many blessings you've bestowed on all of us here in Troy and throughout the country and world. We ask that you continue to bless us by keeping us safe and warm and full of as much joy as possible in this joyous season. But we also ask that you look out for those who are not experiencing the joy that some of us and most of us feel, realizing that there are people hurting throughout this nation, even in our own city, perhaps even in this room. Please be with them, guide them, protect them, save them if necessary, because this is a difficult time for many. Lord, we ask that you continue to bless us here at the table and keep us working together for the benefit of the city and for all of its residents, and we'll be with you forever. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. (Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
All present, please bear with me this evening. My voice comes and goes. I'm going to do my best. Thank you, Councilman Henderson, for my voice. First on the agenda are certificates of recognition and special presentations. This evening we have a special proclamation to recognize one of our best citizens and somebody that's brought so much to our community, Claire Weber, founder of the Troy Somerset Gazette, on her retirement. And if I could ask her to meet me at the podium, I'm going to do my best to make sure that my voice lasts for this, but because Claire has been such an important part of our community, and I know all of us know Claire, how about if all council comes forward and if I need some help along the way, then I know I got somebody with me. So if we all could go to the front, I would appreciate it. Claire, please come forward with me, because it's my honor and my privilege to present to you a proclamation to recognize Claire Weber, founder of the Troy Somerset Gazette. And Claire, I was reading this earlier, and I've said this on other occasions, that you can always tell when somebody's been around a long time and very important by the font that there is...
I know fonts.
You know fonts, don't you? So the smaller the font, the more you get into a space, right? So obviously, you've been an important part of our community, and I'd like to read this proclamation into the record.
Okay.
Whereas Claire Weber started the Troy Somerset Gazette in September 1980 to cover the city's business, civic, and residential communities every Monday morning. Her goal was to help all of them be successful and to present the good news about what we were doing to make Troy a great place to live, work, and play. And whereas, a native of Grand Rapids, Michigan, Claire came to our side of the state to attend that University of Michigan where she majored in English Literature. Of course, after graduation, she moved to Detroit to begin a career at General Motors. Working in the Chevrolet Motor Division at the GM Building on West Grand Boulevard, Claire discovered a weekly newspaper operating in the building and became fascinated with the concept. And whereas Claire first came to Troy in search of the Somerset Collection... I think my wife did the exact same thing. ...and was surprised to see all of the big buildings the city already had along Big Beaver, including Kmart Corporation, AT&amp;T, and Kelly Services. Claire found Troy to be a city with an amazing potential for growth. And whereas, having taken the time to learn the intricacies of publishing the Michigan Daily in Wayne State University's South End, in 1980, Claire decided to strike out on her own, and the Troy Somerset Gazette was born, just as Troy was on the cusp of an economic and building explosion. And whereas, the Troy Somerset Gazette watched this city grow. There were three road widensings on Big Beaver and two of Rochester Road. Buildings were going up at a rapid pace. Coolidge and Crooks Road got major updates, and the Gazette was there to document the good news. And whereas, while new buildings were appearing on Big Beaver, Bellamy was building in Northfield Hills on Crooks Road and provided a dozen groundbreakings for companies from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, GM Robotics, and EDS. The Gazette was there from the groundbreakings to the grand openings, providing the news to all of our community. And whereas, the Gazette witnessed the walkway that would bridge the distance between the New Somerset North and Somerset South. Watching the parsonage and church move down Liverneys to Troy Historic Village, from the front lawn to Judge Norman and Harriet Barnard's front yard was quite an event. I remember walking behind the church. And whereas, supporting the city's nonprofit community was always one of Claire's top priorities. She has been a resident of Troy for more than 30 years. A member since 1980, Claire served on the Troy Chamber of Commerce Board and also served on the Boys and Girls Club of Troy. For her support in the community, Claire and the Troy Somerset Gazette were awarding the Business of the Year Award in 2013. So now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Troy extends special recognition to Claire Weber on her well-deserved retirement as the founder of the Troy Somerset Gazette, never missing a weekly issue. Isn't that incredible? And be it further resolved that the Troy City Council and all of Troy's residents congratulate Claire Weber for her 37 years of dedication and commitment, and of course, we wish you continued success in all future endeavors, plus a future and new adventures. Presented this fourth day of December 2017, Claire, it's signed by myself, all members of the City Council. Thank you so much for what you've done for our community, and congratulations, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just a couple minutes.
Absolutely.
It has been a privilege and a pleasure to grow in Troy. I've loved every minute of it, and I can't believe how fast the time has gone. The one thing I'm concerned about or I'm curious about is how am I going to deal with not having a weekly deadline? I'm going to give it a try.
Thank you, Claire. That's always the best part of the meeting. There are no carryover items this evening. There are no public hearings, so we will move to public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I don't see that anyone has signed up.
I didn't.
Oh, yes, I do. Just kidding. First, I would like to call on Ross Gallantyne, Troy business owner who wishes to speak on Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Ross Gallantyne. I work for Ramp Cogersonson. We own the Troy Marketplace Shopping Center on Big Beaver, and we recently got a notice that the... there's a moratorium on all signage. I understand for life safety, and you guys want to look at what's going on, but we're really concerned about it, because I've got right now the four outbuildings that we're building out there on Big Beaver. We got four signed leases with First Watch, Meche's, Mod Pizza, nothing bunt cakes. If you put a six-month moratorium on it, signage is so important to a tenant, they won't succeed without signage. So what I'm asking you to do is respectively support a resolution that would allow wall signs, hopefully up to 150 square feet or smaller. That would get most of my tenants in there, and just I really ask for consideration. Otherwise, basically, to get new leases, people, if they hear about it for six months, they're not going to sign leases. So we got four more leases that are possibly going to come up by the end of the year, which would put us at eight tenants out there, which is fantastic, but obviously with the six months, it's going to really hurt us. So I'm just asking you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on David Nichols, Troy business owner who wishes to speak on N2. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Dave Nichols. I'm with First Watch Restaurants. We're a tenant with Ross's Development. Again, talking to the same item with the signage, to please consider or reconsider the moratorium that was put on. The language that's in the agenda for today meets what we would consider our standard, which is a sign under 100 square feet. And if that is acceptable to the council, we consider that as acceptable to us. We are ready to start a build-out. We'll be open in 90 days, but without a sign, that would put a delay on our build-out. So we'd like you to consider that as part of your meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'll call on Alec Peoples, Troy resident who wishes also to speak on N2. Good evening.
Both my wife and myself have debated whether or not to speak here again tonight regarding the recently built billboards, and I certainly don't want to begrudge the business owners who want to provide, you know, normal signs. I don't have an issue with that, but I specifically want to speak about the billboards. We all know that we've been talking about here recently. I wasn't sure it was necessary to come speak again, and I should mention that I've talked to several others who wanted to speak tonight but weren't able to attend. At the last meeting, it was great to hear the alignment that council had with the commenters who... regarding the visual ISOs that they present right around the corner from our homes, and even more importantly, the significant safety concern they present. It's clear that you've been working on this issue behind the scenes, as item N2 here has made apparent, and certainly appreciate your time and effort, but I do feel it's important to say a few things without being redundant. The official statement from the city is to be patient while legal options are explored. I understand that, but in the meantime, I see that construction activities have been continuing. The ordinance states that signs will be removed if found to be an immediate hazard to health or safety. As soon as these are turned on, they certainly will be. I won't get into all the safety issues these present. Many were covered last meeting, and really, it should be obvious, but clearly it's not, because they got approved, not to mention they already don't meet the drawings that were provided in the permit application that was included in the February 6th council meeting material. The large electrical boxes recently installed just below the screens, as well as 15-foot or maybe even longer poles jutting out in front of the signs, I believe for cameras for the screen operators, neither of which were included in that permit application. Why hasn't an orange tag to stop work been applied for these issues? As the signs are not activated yet, I'll continue to have patience while legal options are being worked out, but if they are activated, I ask the City Council, are these locations going to be monitored for an increase in traffic accidents? Can we get a commitment for what amount of accidents increase would be acceptable? Would simple fender benders be acceptable, or would we only monitor for serious injury accidents? What about accidents that might happen at the school bus stop right across the street from the Sharky's sign? Do you not think that these are totally crazy questions to even be asking? I will have patience, but action needs to be taken before the switch is flipped on these signs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on David Barron, Troy resident who wishes also to speak on N2. Good evening.
Hi, David Barron, resident of Troy. I spoke last time, and I don't have anything prepared this time other than just maybe a question. I know you can't answer questions, but it'd be nice if there were some kind of communication that Mayor, Council, zoning, planning commission can provide to the city of the residents for where we are with the billboards and when things will happen, and, you know, what's the timeline, basically. So, and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up to speak this evening on this item. This is an opportunity for City Council or City Administration to respond or reply to public comment. Is there any comments... Councilman Baker?
Just briefly, I want to thank both the business owners and the residents for coming out tonight and speaking to us. We obviously continue to get emails and telephone calls, and it's nice to see faces come and share your concerns, because we all have them as well. As for timing, from what I understand, I believe after tonight, there will be some more clarity as to what we are planning to do or what we can do on the agendas that closed session request, where we'll have an opportunity to discuss some legal options more thoroughly, and we should have a better idea. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to come to some kind of, at least, understanding of what our better options are. As far as communication, I'm not sure if it's wise for city to put out, you know, some legal strategies, but as far as the billboard updates, I'm happy to... if you want to email me personally, we can... happy to email whatever I can say or do know at the time, anytime, and if you can disseminate to somebody as well, I'm happy to help in any way I can. So, thank you for coming.
Yeah. Any other comments from council? Comments from City Administration? I think council's a little reluctant at this point to talk. We're going to have a closed session this evening, and we could talk about strategies and options. And to the businesses that came today, if you would have been here at the last meeting, it was never our intent to stifle future signs that fit in to the sign ordinance as we read it previously, so we're going to hopefully correct that this evening, and you should be fine. There are no postponed items this evening, so we will move to regular business. First, regular business is I1, board and committee appointments. I have a few this evening. First, a nomination that I would like... well, there are no appointments, so we're going to move directly to nominations if I could. I have four nominations this evening. First, I want to nominate to the Global Troy Advisory Committee Kathleen Francosis for the term that expires 10/30/2017.
Is that already expired?
Pardon me?
Oh, never mind.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Henderson. We nominate Kathleen Francosis to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 10/30/2017. Any discussion? Councilman Baker?
We're nominating someone to a term that's already expired? That's my question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. That was on my agenda packet. City Clerk Dixon, could you clear that for me?
Should read 2020.
2020.
The three-year term.
Thank you for catching that, Councilman Baker. The correction will be 20, 2020. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember... sorry, Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you to Kathleen for volunteering for that position. Next, I would like to nominate for the Planning Commission, Ali Appahanian, Karen Cruz, and Carlton Faison, for the Planning Commission for the terms that expire 12/31/2020.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we appoint Ali Appahanian, Karen Cruz, Carlton Faison to the Planning Commission for the terms that expire 12/31/2020. Further discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Thanks to those three volunteers to continue to volunteer for such an important committee in our city. Any nominations from the City Council? There are no City Council nominations this evening, so we will move to I3, which is a request for closed session this evening. Councilman Baker?
I'd like to move I3, request for closed session. Be it resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268H, MCL 15.243G.
By Councilman Baker and supported by Councilmember Hamilton, was that? Okay. I'm trying to recognize voices now. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I can move all items on a consent agenda as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the agenda packet this evening. Any discussion on that? Councilman Hamilton?
Just wanted to let everyone know, one of the items here is on Monday, December 11th, at 7:00 PM. There we will have a special study session for the purpose of discussing medical marijuana facilities in our city, so I encourage anyone to attend and view that session.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next on the agenda are memorandums and future council agenda items. K1 is an announcement for a public hearing for December 18th, 2017, which is the next council meeting. There's a conditional rezoning application, file number CRCPCR2016-002, which is a proposed IHOP restaurant and retail on the east side of Rochester, north of Big Beaver, 1033 Urban Crest, 3130 Rochester, 3132 through 3142 Rochester, which is Section 23 from R1E, which is One Family Residential District, to GB, which is General Business District. So that will be on the December 18th, 2017 City Council Meeting. Also, there is an application to delist 839 West Waddles, and there's a proposed amendment to minor and possession ordinance. So those also will be on the next council meeting on the 18th. Next on the agenda is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I don't see that anyone has signed up for that this evening. Next is council referrals. We have three council referrals this evening. These are items advanced to the city manager by individual council, City Council members for placement on the agenda. N1 is a council referral from Councilmember Hoderick regarding internal controls, so I will call on Councilmember Hoderick for that item. Do you want to move that item and get it on the table for discussion?
Yes, and then I would discuss after.
Yes.
Is that the best? Okay. I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move N1. The suggested resolution is, whereas every effort must be made to continue the legacy of high integrity standards in practices the City of Troy has long been recognized for, and whereas recognizing that the protection of this valued ethos necessarily requires continuous improvement and an evolving and comprehensive effort, especially in light of news media reports highlighting the challenges both public and private sector entities are facing, and whereas such an effort demands a continual need for strong internal controls to provide accountability and transparency between the public, this council, and city administration, and whereas a key contributor to ensure decision-making practices of the highest integrity in any organization is a culture of collaboration to support a system of effective checks and balances, and whereas it is right to protect all employees, no matter their level or position, from both unfair allegations as well as backlash from working to address potential issues or allegations, and whereas it is the intent of the City of Troy that employees, no matter what their level, what level their position, should not be able to conceal a potential issue and to know that an environment of trust and support exists to help evaluate and ensure integrity in the workplace. Therefore, be it resolved that the city administration shall establish a cross-functional ethics and internal controls compliance committee, charged with receiving and addressing practices that come into question to ensure even the very appearance of fraud, employee collusion, unethical behavior, or unintended consequences, including damage to the reputation of the city arising from circumstances such as previously unknown issues with policy, inadequate segregation of duties, inappropriate access to assets, or inappropriate control override. Be it further resolved that the Ethics and Internal Controls Compliance Committee become a positive resource for creating a culture where any city employee can feel empowered and encouraged to bring forward a perceived potential issue, and be assured the committee will review and assess the matter to determine its legitimacy and how the allegation, if it is deemed to have merit, should be addressed. In this way, checks and balances required of solid internal controls can be even better assured and enhanced through internal mediation practices and decision-making.
We like Councilwoman Hoderick and supported by Councilman Hamilton, who we approve N1, which is a council referral from Councilmember Hoderick regarding internal controls as read and published in the agenda packet this evening. Councilwoman Hoderick? Councilwoman Hoderek?
Okay, a little bit of context for why I'm bringing this at this point. News headlines, the reports coming out, the corruption in Macomb County, similar reports in the private sector involving the UAW and industry executive have created a fragile time for our trust and faith in our institutions. And the silver lining in such a time as this is that it provokes us to reexamine ourselves. I find myself searching for direction in numerous ways, reading, reflecting, Googling, Googling some more, looking at various websites such as the Michigan Municipal League, the ICMA, these are governmental sites that provide guidance. My day job involves supporting an internal controls function in the private sector. The subject of fraud is in front of me, and I read and learn and watch the best practices and practices that have to be improved. To say this is constantly on my mind is an understatement. A strong internal controls and the resulting accountability and transparency should not be something we shy away from, and this city never has. The city is known for its integrity and its practices, its ethical practices. It's something we have long embraced and valued, was why I loved working here. I worked here part-time for some years. As our organization evolves and we have newer employees mixing with those who have long known the value we place on integrity, I think it's important that we reinforce that ethical culture, that tone, again, here from the table. Council speaks through resolutions, sets policy through resolution, and I felt it was time, this was a good time to reinforce that. We need to set the bar high for ourselves, and we need to protect this very valuable asset in the city. With the tone getting set at the top, the City Council speaking through a policy, I don't mean to dictate the detail of the organization. We should not and do not do that from the council. So I submit this tenderly, and I'm sure there could be some discussion here and improvement on the resolution I set forward. I really applaud the city administration that had set on a review of our policies and controls last fall, and there was a team effort when they did it. It seems timely now to reinforce that effort, formalize it, so that we can collectively continue to build the trust between all of us. That team approach in such a collaborative environment is recognized as being critical to ensuring any irregularities in any organization are identified and rectified. The work in this regard can't be static, whether we should recognize that it's dynamic and fluid, and we must evolve our vigilance over time. This is the context for the resolution tonight, to reinforce, evolve, and embrace as a team how we approach our most important valuable assets, our ethics and integrity.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion on the resolution? Councilman Hamilton?
One sense I got from the campaign trail this year and from politics in general in our country is a lack of trust. Our government isn't supposed to be this outside thing. It's supposed to be us and represent us and be our voice. And I think the only way to restore the trust that has been lost throughout the country, not even here, is transparency, openness, integrity, and strong ethics. So I fully support Councilmember Hoderek's resolution. Let's make this an open and transparent government. So I have a few questions, too. What is our current whistleblower policy for the city? I ask the city admin.
And we've provided a copy, Mayor.
Well, I wanted to just make sure that the residents of Troy are aware of this.
You want me to read the response?
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. It's, so, this is just a summation of it. Whenever an employee believes that a City of Troy official employee has violated any state or federal statute, city ordinance, or city charter provision, personnel rule, or administrative memorandum, the employee shall have the right and is encouraged to disclose and discuss the matter with his or her immediate supervisor or other supervisor, up to and including the city manager, the human resource director, or the city attorney. Should the employee believe that the city manager or city attorney has violated any state or federal statute, city ordinance, or charter provision, personnel rule, or administrative memorandum, the employee or any supervisory employee to whom the employee has reported the alleged violation shall have the right to report any alleged violations by the city manager to the city attorney, or any alleged violations by the city attorney to the city manager. Alternatively, the employer supervisory employee may report the alleged violation directly to the city council or a member of city council at the employee's discretion. The city official receiving a report of an alleged violation of any state or federal statute, city ordinance, or charter provision, personnel rule, or administrative memorandum shall review the allegations and inform the reporting employee what steps will be taken, if any. If, after discussing the matter, the employee is not satisfied with this response, the employee shall have the right to report the matter directly to the city manager, the city attorney, or the city council or member thereof. So, that's a summation of it, and that was written by Craig Lang, Labor Counsel at the time last year, at the request of council. It isn't a city council policy, as you recall. It is an administrative memo that we didn't change after it came to council as backdrop, as background.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So another question I'd have is, how would this board be appointed? Or is that going to be beyond our discretion? Would the city council appoint it? What were your thoughts on that? Or do we want to leave that up to city administration? I'm asking Councilwoman Hoderek.
I don't know if that's a question for the city attorney, but the resolution speaks for itself. I would say that it says to establish, direct administration to establish. I guess the question, City Attorney Bloom, and welcome.
Yes.
I know you've, I've had a difficult day.
Yes.
But welcome. Does City Council have the authority to do this?
City Council has the authority to ask city administration, but city administration would put forward the specifics and run with that, and they would be the administrators of that.
So, it's just a direction to require city administration to establish, as opposed to us telling what, us to tell the administration what to do.
Okay.
Correct? Thank you. Any other questions? Mayor Protam Abraham?
Still learning my title myself.
I know.
Just one comment. You know, in many organizations, they put a group like this, an internal controls group, together after an incident has happened. The fact that this is being proposed of our own free will in a proactive, transparent manner speaks to the maturity of the city, the employees, and the culture here. So I thank Councilwoman Hoderek for putting this forward. This wasn't anything I hadn't been thinking of, but when you provided the context for it, it certainly provides a lot of guidance on why this is a very timely thing, considering everything that is going on, public and private sector. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Councilman Baker?
I think this is for the city manager or city staff. Like all of us, I mean, concerned with transparency and ethics, I mean, that's what makes our city so great, I believe, and we definitely always need to be looking at new ways to make sure we're on top of that. But is any of this duplicative for what city management's already doing? I mean, do we already have policies or do you already have policies and procedures in place that address some of these issues? Or is, I mean, could you maybe speak on that a little bit?
I can, Councilmember Baker. So, what I, you know, it's, and Councilmember Hoderek and I have talked about this, what I, you know, what would be prudent to do right now is to go through everything and with this resolution and see all the processes we have, because we do have labor agreements, we do have personnel policy, personnel manuals, we do have administrative memorandums as per city ordinance. So, you know, how those all mesh together to do this, I'm not sure. And I don't want to talk about labor agreements, but it wouldn't go to a committee like this, right? It would go through the channel. And I don't think that's, you know, what Councilmember Hoderek is talking about. It's just, there will be different classes of people where this will apply to and not apply to, in the different areas that we do have processes. Does that make sense?
Yeah, somewhat. I think I, I mean, for me, as I sit here, I feel like this might be a little premature until we can see if it is, I feel like I need to understand maybe some more things before I vote on something like this, and maybe it might be wise to table it pending a review and a presentation of some sort from you and to what you could even put together in something like this. I hate to give a direction to you, because I think once we speak through resolution, we kind of have an expectation that something's going to come, and if it's going to take a while to review things and figure out what needs to be done, it might make sense to table this until we can get some kind of presentation or something like, I don't know if presentation's the right word, but maybe I'm speaking Greek, but maybe I'm alone on that as well, and I don't know. I didn't, I actually, I am going to move to table this then, pending the city administration review of when of the policies and procedures already in place, the labor agreements, so that we can, or so that I can at least have a better understanding of what we are doing with this resolution.
I'm going to support that, because that was some of the thinking that I certainly appreciate bringing the resolution forward, and I don't think anybody ever wants to disagree with having ethics and internal controls or anything.
And I don't mean to put anybody in the [inaudible].
No, I don't, I don't think anybody ever wants to do that, but I do have some questions that I would like staff to bring forward, maybe with a report, if it gets tabled, to bring forward. I, you know, I have a little bit of concerns about how this would affect what employees, because certainly we have many, many labor agreements, we have many, many contracts, and we don't want to, you know, accept that, those contracts, and we certainly don't want somebody that's in one association feeling that they can not follow their contract or follow their procedure and jump to something. So, I think we need, we do need a report from the administration who it would affect. I am in 100% agreement with continuing the process that was put in place about internal reviews and that committee that was put forward already. So if this, if this resolution had asked for a continuation of that process, I would be 100% in favor of voting for that this evening. But I think I need a little more information, and I don't think another month, you know, would hurt us if we table this to the first or second meeting, and I would just like a time, time, if we're going to table it, how about the second meeting in January? If I could just, that first one back is really...
January 22nd.
January 22nd.
January 22nd?
Second.
If I could just add that to the, then I would support that. And the other, well, we can have, let's, any other discussion on postponing? Councilman Henderson?
Not necessarily on postponing, but I know that the mayor, Councilman Baker, myself, in, it was the fall of 2016, and I apologize for my voice, but...
You should.
Trying to push some air out, sorry. There was a, we, the city manager put a meeting together to discuss administrative memos and try to update policy and procedures, and it was clearly evident that there was a lot of gray area in a lot of the policies and procedures that we had, and he had committees put together that were looking at various policies, and even the committees had some concern about some gray area that was present in some of the policies. So, I appreciate the fact that he put that meeting together, and I think that is an ongoing process, and I think that this kind of dovetails with that. So I agree, but, you know, certainly we need to have a little bit more input from the city managers to, you know, how he could implement something like this. The other thing is, you had mentioned that the Councilwoman Hoderek about Macomb County, I think Rizzo may be the thing that you were bringing up. I know there's some other issues in Macomb County, but this council was presented with some options with Rizzo, and Rizzo had tried to force us to make some changes in our trash. So, we declined that. We declined all those conversations and did the right thing within the City of Troy. So I think, you know, by and large, we do the right thing in the City of Troy with regard to ethics and that sort of thing. So, again, I appreciate, nobody is going to ever suggest that we don't want to do the right thing as it regards ethics, but I think we already do a pretty good job. If this is just to put some backbone and some spine into it, you know, I agree with it.
Thank you. There is a motion on the table to postpone. Is there any further discussion on that? Councilman Hamilton?
Could we just amend this to replace establish with investigate establishing across functional ethics for the resolution? Instead, make it to investigate it rather than establish? Investigate establishment on?
I think that's, that's worth discussing. The motion on the table is to table it at this point, and I would guess you're asking not to table it and to just change it. Just my comment in that, to me, there's some other things in the resolution that I think I need to have some background on. I really would also like to see our labor attorney and interpretation from the labor attorney on the ramifications internally, if this resolution, as it is written, even with changing the language. So that's another area that I think, Councilman Pennington?
We can always change the language in January when we revisit it.
I think after everyone's had a chance, quite honestly, I was anxious to hear Councilwoman Hoderek speak this evening. It's one thing to read a resolution, but it's always nice to hear the words behind the resolution, and after hearing the words behind the resolution, I think I understand now, but I'm not prepared to vote on this this evening, and I think if we just give ourselves a little more time, and Councilwoman Hoderek?
Absolutely. I could have tried to finesse this behind the scenes. I wanted to get the thought out there on the table. I don't want to put any of my fellow council members on the spot that you're voting no on integrity. I think if anything, what this says is we're having a real, honest, candid, out-there discussion about the fact that, A, we value this, and B, we recognize the city already has some amazing controls in place. This is not a city that is criticized for not having integrity. C, we're looking at how do we do this in a continuous improvement way? Is there modernizing we can do? Is there a way to dovetail the work that many members of the staff have already been doing, as you guys mentioned last fall? That's the intent. If tabling gets us there, because we can have better information, you know, there's a lot we can learn as we have this dialogue. There's nothing wrong with that, and the community can join us in that. The idea is to feel good and solid about our controls as best we can, and to engage in this discussion. That's the intent. I have no issue with tabling it so we learn more, so we get a better perspective, so we all learn, you guys now will swirl, maybe you'll be Googling, maybe you'll be, you know, let's work this. Maybe we pull back on my words a little bit, take a step forward. It's another step forward six months from now. I just wanted to have the dialogue and not be the only one that was up at night thinking about things. So I appreciate that.
No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the comments, and, you know, just for those of you in the audience, one of the, one of the real problems with the Open Meetings Act is that we can't talk amongst ourselves before a meeting. We can never talk amongst ourselves, you know, to discuss things, and if you bring a resolution forward, sometimes you need to hear what that council member was thinking to bring that forward, because you can't meet with them to talk to them, and it's kind of silly in some respects, but I understand the Open Meetings Act, and we all abide by it, and this is a perfect example of how we abide by it, you know? And I know City Attorney Bloom loves to hear that, so. Is there any further discussion on postponing this, collect some more information?
To the January 20th?
To the January 25th. To the January 25th meeting? Any other further discussion on that? We have a vote on that, Ms. Mistake.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodorick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Thank you, and I appreciate you bringing that forward. City Manager Kishnik, are you and City Attorney Bloom are well care on the direction that came from council regarding some feedback?
You're okay. City Attorney's okay?
Okay.
And I understand, I think we just need to go through what we have today and who it affects and how, and Lori, the city attorney, will be involved in that as well. Good.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is N2, which is a council referral from Councilmember Henderson regarding reconsideration of Resolution 2017-11-187. And I'm not going to read this for Councilman Henderson tonight, he's on his own.
Thanks.
Can you tell?
I think I'm good.
You're good?
I'll muddle through. Unintended consequences, we talked about last week about the moratorium, so this is just a follow-up to that. So I'd like to read N2, council referral regarding reconsideration of Resolution Number 2017-11-187. Whereas on November 20th, 2017, the Troy City Council amended a proposed resolution authorizing a moratorium on all signed permit applications for the city of Troy for a period of 180 days, which is known as Resolution 2017-11-187. And whereas, in discussing the language for the resolution for a signed moratorium, the Troy City Council expressed some concern that a total ban on all signs may cause some unintended consequences and prevent new Troy businesses from placing on-premises advertising. And whereas, based on concerns raised at the city council meeting, the proposed signed moratorium resolution was quickly amended at the table, resulting in some ambiguity and unintended consequences, and desires to address this at the meeting immediately following the passage of Resolution 2017-11-187. And whereas, city council is interested in amending the signed moratorium to allow for limited signage that is not inconsistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, and wants to clarify its earlier moratorium to clearly prohibit digital signs and large ground signs and large wall signs. Now therefore, it is ordered that the city council Resolution 2017-11-187 is reconsidered.
Support.
By Councilman Harrison, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve N2, which is a council referral from Councilmember Henderson regarding reconsideration of Resolution Number 2017-11-187, as read and printed on the agenda packet. Discussion, Councilman Henderson?
So we received several letters. I stopped in and visited a sign company, and certainly Mr. Gallantine's letter I have right here in my hands. So when we clamped down and eliminated all future signs, it was well-intended because we had a situation on our hands, but certainly we understand, most of us on council understand the need for new businesses especially to have signage on our buildings. So with that stated, I think it's important that the next resolution that we have is approved so that we can try to alleviate that situation and have business as usual with understanding that, you know, we want to, you know, make some sign ordinance changes to better the community, so.
Thank you, appreciate you bringing this forward. I know there was a lot of discussion, some from a skiper, that we didn't want to create a loophole that somebody could come in and take advantage of what we were trying to accomplish. And I think it was pretty evident in the discussion that we did not want to hurt or affect any future businesses that were coming through. In fact, I think we asked a question, is there anything on the table? And at the time, I think the answer was no, but obviously that, some things changed. So I'm going to support the resolution, get it on the table for further discussion. Any further, did you, you already did that. Also, so is there any other comments from council? Can I just ask one question before, I see Paul Evans is here.
Good evening.
You know, this has been a very difficult few weeks for you.
It's been challenging.
Very challenging, appreciate it, appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
But is this going to allow for the next, let's say, three months, business as usual as opposed to the signs that have created this issue? Is this pretty much going to allow business as usual for signs on walls and the way things were done prior to this?
It's relative, based on what people want. So for example, I heard one of the commenters say tonight they wanted wall signs for 150 square feet, and that's what they presumably believe is business as usual. So ultimately, it depends on what people want, and if they can't have certain things, what they can at least live with. I'm not sure there's a real quantitative answer beyond the scope of the ordinance that we were under until the moratorium.
Councilman Hamilton?
That was essentially my question, but I have another question. What is, previously, what was the wall sign limit?
The wall sign limit in most of our non-residential districts would allow any number of wall signs. The combined total square footage of all the wall signs on the building or tenant space, depending on the application, would not exceed 10% the front face of that particular building or tenant space.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
The revised ordinance makes reference to a moratorium on electronic messaging centers or digital signs. There's a wide spectrum of digital, something that you might see at CVS that says, you know, toothpaste is on sale, red letters on a black background, digital sign versus something more like the Lady Janes sign that I think everyone's familiar with on Rochester Road, which is much higher digital quality than what you'd see at CVS. Is there any way to distinguish whether it's in this resolution for the moratorium or going forward to distinguish between, I guess, high-def versus low-def digital signs?
I think we could, with more study, of course. I'm not prepared to get in because I haven't researched exactly how to do it. So I guess it depends on what we mean by differentiation. Do we want size? Are there other factors that we want? Colors comes to mind? Location? Maybe there's other things, but I think that's a larger question that I don't have the answer for tonight.
Okay.
Councilman Pennington?
Paul, how you doing? Can you comment to the fact of the previous residents' comment about a pole coming out of the front of the sign and then an extra box? I mean, I haven't seen the ongoing construction on the monster signs, but just curious if you have.
Well, a picture speaks a thousand words, but I looked at all the sites today of the five billboard signs that I think the commenter is referring to, and there are some two arms that stick out of it that appear to be cameras, and then there's some electrical boxes that were attached to the poles that are probably that big. I want to discuss that with upper management because I looked at all of them today to get a firsthand example, but I still have questions myself, and we want to get our hands wrapped around that as to how that might fit in with the code and what the mayor may or may not be able to do to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we need to be a little careful this evening because we are going into closed session to talk about, I know city administration has proposed changes to the ordinance, and we're going to be meeting with the city attorney to discuss strategies and how we want to work this ordinance. So are there any other questions regarding the resolution? Councilman Hodorick?
I just got twisted up in our agenda. So the resolution on the table right now is...
A reconsideration.
For reconsideration. And so then, okay, so I have questions. Okay, maybe, I guess I'm ready to vote on that.
Great.
And then I have questions about the other.
Great. Sounds good.
So never mind.
Great. I know, I know we all want to say some things, but we have to be guarded before we go into closed session. City Attorney Bloom is over there making, giving me good eye contact. Thank you, Paul. I appreciate what you've gone through in the last few weeks. It certainly isn't your fault what happened, that's for sure.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
The vote, Ms. Tison?
Councilmember Hodorick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passed, Councilman Henderson?
So I'll try to muddle through this next one. Proposed resolution to amend reconsidered Resolution 2017-11-187 by substitution. Resolve that Troy City Council hereby amends Resolution 2017-11-187 by striking in its entirety and substituting it with the following. Whereas the city of Troy, Michigan, has an ordinance that regulates signs in the city of Troy, including large elevated digital signs in the city's business districts, and whereas in adopting the ordinance, the city previously determined that proliferation of signs in the city is unduly distracting to motorists and pedestrians, creates a traffic hazard, and reduces the effectiveness of signs needed to direct and warn the public. It was also determined that the appearance of the city is marred by proliferation of signs. It was also determined that proliferation of signs, thanks Lori, by the way, proliferation of signs restricts light and air. It was also determined that proliferation of signs negatively affects property values. It was also determined that proliferation of signs results in inappropriate use of land. The purpose of the ordinance is to control the occurrence and size of signs in order to reduce the aforementioned negative effects. It was also determined that the signs of least value to people within the city are those which carry commercial messages other than the advertisement of any product, service, event, person, institution, or business located on the premises where the sign is located or indicates the sale or rental of such premises. And whereas, the city has recently received a number of applications for very large elevated digital ground signs, which are proposed to be located on major thoroughfares in the city, including but not limited to the Rochester Road Business Corridor. And whereas, upon information and belief, large digital signs carry commercial messages other than the advertisement of any product, service, event, person, institution, or business located on the premises where the sign is located, resulting in an excessive amount of signage on selected properties. And whereas, the recent influx of large digital ground signs has proliferated the city's business corridors and has generated a number of complaints from residents and businesses. And whereas, the Troy City Council remains concerned about the potential negative impacts from sign proliferation, and that these large digital ground signs are illuminated and therefore likely to cause distractions for drivers, as well as a resulting deterioration of property values in the city of Troy. And whereas, the Troy City Council intends to research and review its existing sign ordinance provisions and determine if amendments are required in order to preserve the public health, safety, and welfare. And this review process could include Detroit Planning Commission residents and/or the business community, and such a comprehensive analysis is likely to take approximately six months. And whereas, the Troy City Council is concerned that the issuance of any additional large or digital sign permits during this comprehensive review process may result in future nonconformities if the ordinance is amended, and also is likely to detrimentally impact health, safety, and welfare. And whereas, based on these considerations, the Troy City Council issued a moratorium of all signs on November 20th, 2017, but based on subsequently acquired information, city council desires to modify this moratorium to allow limited sign applications that are not inconsistent with the promotion of health, safety, and welfare. Now therefore, be it resolved that as of the fourth day of December 2017, the Troy City Council hereby imposes a new 180-day moratorium prohibiting the Troy City Administration from processing any of the following permit applications for property in the city of Troy. An electronic message center digital sign, a ground sign that exceeds 36 square feet, a wall sign that exceeds 100 square feet, any ground sign that exceeds 10 feet in height. This moratorium will allow consideration and evaluation of Troy's sign provisions. If the complete process is completed in less than 180 days, then the Troy City Council has the option to pass a subsequent resolution terminating the moratorium prior to the expiration of 180 days in its sole discretion. Be it further resolved that Troy City Council hereby direct city administration to initiate a process for the review of Troy's sign code provisions.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Harrison, supported by Councilwoman Hodorick, that we approve N2, as read in the agenda packet this evening, regarding the amended resolution, reconsideration resolution. Councilman Henderson?
I would only like to suggest that we should do this in less than 180 days, maybe half the time. I know that the city management has gotten information to the city attorney's office regarding their opinions on sign ordinance changes, and if we can expedite this, again, unintended consequences, we don't need to interfere in the opportunities that the city presents itself with regard to new businesses and signage.
I understand. I agree, we should get this done as soon as possible. City Manager Kishnik?
Just to clarify, what we presented or what we sent on to the city attorney's office was a culmination of everything these staff has been thinking of over the years, so there 'd be more meetings that we'll need to have and go through and discuss. But what was provided was the culmination of all the changes that they would think necessary.
City Attorney Bloom?
Just to say that it is a priority to get this done. It's been a priority for some time, and I do appreciate the city management providing suggested language. It is a process, we will get to it as quickly as we can, and get it back to you.
I understand. I think you're probably waiting for the closed session this evening so that council gives direction this evening, so I'm sure that's part of the process. So for those of you in the audience, this closed session this evening, hopefully there'll be direction from council as to where we're going to go and what we're going to do and all of the issues that have been addressed. Councilman Hamilton, did you have?
Oh, no.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Hodorick?
We have in there a wall sign that exceeds 100 square feet. I thought I heard one of our business owners talking about 150. Do we need to reconcile that? Or do we want to stay with 100 square feet for the 90 days?
I hate to ask Paul Evans to come back, but my understanding is that all of the applications that were presented so far fit within the category of the resolution. Is that correct?
All the ones presented so far do not. Now, we've been receiving applications, I have some that were received before the moratorium went into effect, but I have been receiving applications afterwards. Now, I've just been holding those applications.
You're holding the applications for anything that exceeds?
Well, we put the moratorium in place, you know, last time, and many of these sign companies that apply, I've got a relationship with, I work with them all the time, and I explained to them that as the, you know, days went by getting closer to this meeting, it appears there may be a potential change to that resolution or that moratorium. it appears there may be a potential change to that resolution, or that moratorium, as soon as tonight. So, as more information became available, as applications came in, and I called people and said, "Well, I won't be able to get to it in my normal amount of time, however, there may be some light at the end of the tunnel, it's just going to depend on if there is action by council and what that action may be."
So, if this is approved, will those applications be approved that you have received?
All the locations I've received won't be approved, no.
Councilman Baker?
Why? Why wouldn't they? What would prohibit this, them from being approved based on this language, in a nutshell? Or if you know, is it size?
There are, there are some applications that have come in that are oversized, yes.
Wall-sized size? Well, I mean, is that the...
Some are.
Ground signs are fairly small in this amendment?
Some are wall signs, yeah.
Okay. And just for clarification with you, you said the previous ordinance, ordinance, the way it was before the moratorium, is a wall sign is limited to 10% of the front-facing square footage?
Right.
So, 150-square-foot wall sign would need to have 1,500 square feet of front, I don't even really know what that means, Paul, I'll be honest.
Yeah.
I don't have context of that. I mean, I know the math, but I'm trying to picture what that looks like.
Yes, if we take a building that has 150 square feet, say this is building frontage, width times height, we'll just do a simple one, if this area here that faces the front measures 1,500 square feet, then the maximum size for the wall sign would be 150 square feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I thought at that, but I just love to see it.
I think it's relative to size of the building and how it might look, as they all are.
Councilman Henderson?
So, the real issues are the, the digital changeable signs, right? You know, I think Alibi has a new sign, and, you know, advertises two pizzas for the price of one, whatever, I mean, that, they can change that scroll. So, those are the real issues. A wall sign on a building doesn't necessarily have that digital component to it. Correct, most of them don't. Okay, so, is it, is it overkill then for us to call out four, there's four different line items here, an electronic message center, digital, a ground sign that exceeds 36 square feet, a wall sign that exceeds 100 square feet, any ground sign that exceeds 10 feet in height? So, I can see a ground sign being a digital sign, but I can't necessarily see a wall sign. So, is there some other language that you would suggest that would allow us to do better business in Troy without?
Well, I think that's going to require potentially more study as to who's doing what, not just in Troy, but elsewhere throughout the sign industry.
I'm sorry, but for the sake of this moratorium, which may be 100 or 90 days, is there any reason we wouldn't stick with a wall sign and the language that we already had in our ordinance, which was the 10% of, why wouldn't we just keep that as the bullet point? Our current ordinance for wall sign, that current language, for the 90-day to 100-day, is there a reason we went, we stepped this back to 100 square feet for 90 to 180 days?
I've had limited input on this, I don't know what the reason is.
So, it seems to make sense to me to change that bullet point to be the 10% of the front-facing, whatever that language was. So, that if it needs to be 150 square feet, if this business owner is falling in that ordinance definition, it can proceed in that 90 to 100, we didn't mean to thwart these kinds of efforts. Our residents don't mean to thwart these kinds of efforts, so if that language was working for us, and certainly it could work for another 90 to 180 days, it seems to me. So, I guess I'm proposing that we take that third bullet point, change it to that.
You're asking to change a wall sign that exceeds 10%, or whatever the language says today, 10% of this front, frontal square footage?
That same language that we...
Up to 150, is it, is it say up to 150?
It doesn't.
So, if it's 2,000, they can put 200?
Right.
Mayor, Mayor Protam?
Do you want a second to get, for discussion, the amendment?
I was going to make a different suggestion than Councilwoman.
Because I think City Attorney Bloom wants to say something before we get too far into this.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. First of all, it is your resolution, so you can do whatever you want with the resolution. However, rather than changing it, this is a moratorium, so I would suggest that you just delete that whole bullet point, rather than, than keeping that in there. However, Mayor, you do make a good point in that there could be a very large sign, depending on the building frontage. So, there is that possibility, and I think that the moratorium, which is a temporary thing, it's, it's a temporary suspension, and it's designed to not have nonconformities if this council decides to pull back some of their sign regulations later on. So, again, that's, that's your call, it's your resolution. If you are intending on, you could always amend it to 150 if you wanted to, or you could just delete that bullet point as well.
If we delete that, that bullet point, though, doesn't the moratorium that we passed before, or does, or is, this is replacing that, correct?
This is a substitution.
Okay, so, we took that away, then the old, whatever language is in there would be in there already?
This is replacing that, so this is...
Correct, but if we took that bullet point out, then whatever the ordinance says right now is what?
Correct.
Would be, okay.
That's the default.
That seems more logical to me.
I guess that's what I want to do, is default on that.
And that, that would give Mr. Gallant, would be okay for him? Okay. Okay, Councilman Pennington?
Go ahead, you go first.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, so, we don't want to have this same problem to where now we've taken out that bullet point, and if someone has a 2,000-square-foot building, building frontage, they can have a 200-square-foot sign that is digital. That is exactly what we're trying to do without, right?
But we are putting in, an electronic message center is not allowed.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Baker?
Well, I kind of along the same, sort of. I was going to support the amendment to delete that, but for the reason that I think that the issue, the reason we're talking about this tonight and two weeks ago is because of the billboard issue. I don't think if we're putting a moratorium on the digital signs, I think that stops a billboard from being put up, like the ones on Rochester Road, which is why we're here. So, I, I would support keeping the wall signs as is and pending further review.
Councilwoman Hoderick, are you suggesting we amend the resolution and eliminate the bullet point, a wall sign that exceeds 100 square feet?
Yes.
I'll support that. If we do that, the gentlemen that are here this evening will be able to put their signs up, is all I think we really care about here.
Better get those leases and those...
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, any of the discussion on Councilman Henderson's? Well, this is Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hoderick's amendment to the resolution. Any further discussion? We have a vote on that, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have a vote on the, on the amendment now.
This is the resolution as amended, deleting the third bullet point.
Correct.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Put that sign up tomorrow. Next on the agenda is N3, which is a council referral from Councilmember Abraham regarding retirement benefits for government workers in Michigan. Mayor Protam Abraham?
If I may, I'll read it into the record. Whereas, the Michigan Legislature has indicated a desire to introduce and pass legislation, possibly by the end of the year, regarding retirement benefits of local government employees, including police and first responders. And whereas, the city of Troy has fully funded its retirement and significantly funded its OPEB liabilities, it acknowledges this is a critical issue for local governments throughout the state, and is appreciative of legislative efforts to recognize these financial pressures and identify approaches to alleviate those pressures, but also recognizes that Michigan's local government funding model is fundamentally broken for reasons beyond retirement and OPEB liabilities. And most especially, the diversion of more than 8.1 billion in planned revenue sharing from cities since 2001 through 2016 to balance the state budget, and a direct loss of approximately 26 million for the city of Troy. And whereas, Michigan is the only state in the country investing less in our local governments now than in 2002, even though the state's economy has risen 30% over the same period. And whereas, the city of Troy urges the Michigan Legislature to comprehensively address the crisis in municipal funding, including but not limited to the significant decreases in revenue sharing, headly and Proposal A limitations, and retirement and other post-employment OPEB liabilities, while simultaneously preserving local control, which would allow communities to responsibly prioritize their own limited municipal dollars, which may include support for public safety officers and/or the ability to attract and retain talented employees. And whereas, the city council unanimously passed resolution number 2016-12-207 on December 5, 2016, urging the Michigan Legislature to vote against the Local Unit of Government Retirement Act, HB 6075 to 6086, that would have curtailed retirement benefits of local government employees. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Troy, the city of Troy City Council urges the Michigan Legislature to vote against legislative measures that would negatively impact retirement benefits of local government employees, including police and first responders, and encourages the Michigan Legislature to work cooperatively with the governor and the Michigan Municipal League and others to comprehensively, creatively, and responsibly address the broken local government finance model, examining revenue sharing, public retirement, and health insurance benefits while simultaneously preserving local control. Be it further resolved that the city administration is directed to provide a copy of this resolution to Governor Rick Snyder, State Senator Marty Nolenberg, State Representative Martin Howerlack, and the Michigan Municipal League.
Support.
By Mayor Protam Abraham, supported by Councilman Hamilton, that we approve N2, which is a council referral from Councilmember Abraham regarding retirement benefits for government workers in Michigan. Mayor Protam Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. It was literally a year ago that we were having this very discussion, and I thank Mayor Protam Hoderick for bringing it forward at that time. It inspired me to bring it in this year as well. Since the time I wrote this resolution and submitted it, I think Thursday morning, the State House has introduced bills HB 5298 and 5313, and the State Senate has introduced bills SB 686 to 701. The intent of these bills are to address funding shortfalls in municipal retiree pension and healthcare funds, including the creation of a financial management team that can assume control of a budget in a community with underfunded retiree pension and healthcare funds. Furthermore, this financial team may be exempt from the Open Meetings Act. It is natural to ask, why introduce this resolution when Troy does not have an issue? We have a fully funded pension. Three reasons, really. One, because it threatens our ability to attract and retain talent for any position in local government, but particularly in law enforcement and first responders. Two, because it is a continued threat on local government and home rule control. It's frankly an affront to transparency in government. And three, because it does not solve the fundamental cause of many cities' financial woes, namely that Lansing continues to shortchange cities of their portion of state shared revenue. It makes me wonder, how can I trust the state to manage municipal retiree pensions and healthcare funds when they have consistently and persistently failed to keep their promise to cities when it comes to state revenue sharing? I understand that there are communities that are in a serious financial position due to underfunded liabilities. I get it. Frankly, I welcome Governor Snyder's joint task force that was charged with tackling this issue. I was pleased to see that municipal workers and law enforcement were being brought to the table to come up with a practical solution. It is disappointing that the House and Senate bills do not reflect the spirit of that joint task force. It is troubling that the concerns expressed by law enforcement a year ago are still valid today. I'm deeply concerned that the continued erosion of retiree benefits will impact the city and the state's ability to attract those to law enforcement, to the law enforcement field in particular. These are the type of jobs where if you do it well, no one notices, and if you do it poorly, everyone notices. Every day, our law enforcement puts their lives on the line to keep us safe. Every day, their families worry they may never walk through that door again. Just ask the family of Wayne State Officer Colin Rose, killed two days before Thanksgiving last year. Ask the family of Olken County Deputy Eric Overall, killed on Thanksgiving this year. What does it say about us as a society to slash the retiree benefits on those who put their lives on the line to keep us safe? What quality of individual do we hope to recruit into law enforcement when we disrespect the profession by cutting their benefits when they need it the most? Would we be able to recruit someone who would buy a young boy a bike to replace the one that got destroyed in an extrication, like Officer Morgan, Officer Benier, Sergeant Bragg, and Sergeant Gopler did last week? While I am appreciative that the state legislature is trying to do and trying to solve a fundamental financial issue, these bills will have a significant and unintended consequence to our public safety. I encourage my fellow council members to support this resolution just as they did last year.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Abraham. Well said. Thank you for that. Councilwoman Hoderick?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protam Abraham, for picking up the baton this year on this. The situation we're in on this discussion frankly infuriates me that this is happening again. Having said that, I always try to question my worldview, try to look and see, is there something I'm missing, not understanding? And as I was poring through emails and catching up before the council meeting, I found an op-ed that was sent in, actually from a businessman who is here in Troy, and I'm going to provide this to the city clerk to enter into the record, and I'll make sure I forward it to all the council. But he, Mr. Lebreck, really articulates some things well here, and in that, as he comments on the bills, he says they're intended to protect municipalities from severe plan underfunding. Well, I'm afraid of that idea, so, okay, maybe these are a good idea, I think. He goes on to say, although this is a noble cause and one that clearly affects all of us as Michigan taxpayers and citizens, the bills are flawed. With only 20 to 30 out of 600 plans in trouble, the approach is akin to throwing everything in your refrigerator out when only 3% of the food is spoiled. Another set of problems with the proposed solution is that the bills take away the effective rights of a community and their employees to negotiate retirement benefits and further prohibit some types of new defined benefit pension plans. He talks about the fact that he pays a substantial amount of money in property taxes in his community. I do so under the understanding that my community can recruit and retain qualified employees. Although I love our folks at City Hall, the ones I... folks at City Hall, the ones I really need are my first responders, my police and my fire. I want quality public safety officers to protect my family and my property. In today's world, it is hard to find and keep great talent. In the dangerous job of protecting our citizens, it is even harder yet. Communities compete against the private sector and each other to attract talent. Traditionally, pension and retirement benefits are part of that attraction. These, he's affirming my thinking here. We have a huge challenge, not just in our police and fire, but in municipalities, to attract talented employees. When our, when we need DPW folks to fix water, you want talent, and it's something that you think you don't need. It's like breathing, you take it for granted until it's not there. You don't want it to take three weeks for them to fix a severe situation. We need people to aspire to these roles in our society. We need to embrace and value them. He concludes with, I believe the bills are misguided and overreaching. The governor appointed a special commission to study the issue, which formulated a reasonably well-thought-out solution. The legislature should adopt these options. I am going to contact my elected officials and let them know that I think communities should have the option to negotiate with their own police and fire and suggest that they adopt the governor's special commission's recommendations. In any event, I want my first responders to be the best they can be and paid well to do their jobs, and I hope I never need them. And that's the case of it. We need to have local control over who we can attract and retain, and I don't want that taken away. I don't want Lansing ever, today or even five, ten years from now, dictating what we can do, how we can compensate, and what we can offer our employees. And so I can support this resolution once again. It's concerning when these things come up in a lame duck session. The lame duck session is frightening to watch because there's great risk, and our communities need to have their local control retained with them.
Thank you. Any comments from council regarding this? Councilman Hamilton?
I, Councilwoman Hoderick, said a lot of what I wanted to say, but a lot of legislatures and politicians will say they always support police and they always support fire, but this is how you support the police and fire. And I attended the Troy Citizens Academy a couple months ago, and they already told me that some other communities have better retirement benefits for other police than even we do, and we do a pretty good job of it, I think. And this legislation could remove our ability to decide how we do that. It could take away the option of defined benefit for future police. And according to the Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments, they could come up with their own actuarial assumptions on what is a funded or unfunded pension or retirement. And it could be very arbitrary how they figure that out. And according to their formula, we may not, currently we say we're a hundred two percent funded. They could redefine the formula and say we're not funded arbitrarily. I think that's absurd, and I agree. We should look into what that group came up with, rather than this, and I support this resolution.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing the resolution forward. I think it's always important to send messages to Lansing that talk about local control. The thing that irks me more than anything is that Lansing is the first ones to always gripe about the federal government telling states what to do, and then they turn around and hypocritically want to tell local government what to do. I don't get it. I know we have a couple retired officers sitting in the audience today that are listening to what's being said here today, because this doesn't just affect new hirees, this affects those that have put in their time and made the sacrifices and expected and were promised something when they retired. And now we have someone that wants to sit up in Lansing and affect what those promises were made. And I don't think there's anything you can ever do that's worse than telling and making a promise to somebody and then going back on your promise. I know the city of Troy has done an excellent job of funding our retirement, and we're in good shape, but I don't trust Lansing that they can't change the formulas one day and, as Councilman Hamilton said, change the formulas and make us not be a hundred percent as we are today, and maybe not be as solvent in our medical retirement also. So I think this is always important to do. I commend Mayor Protam Abraham for bringing this forward, as Councilwoman Hoderick did last year. And I think that message that we sent last year had some effect, because it was tabled last year. I understand that there are issues that need to be addressed, but this is not the way to do it. As you've commented, this special commission should have somebody listening to what they said and not letting some legislator from Lansing make those decisions. I would encourage State Senator Nolenberg and State Representative Howerlech to come before us and give us an update as to where this is in Lansing today. I've talked to Senator Nolenberg, I understand his position, but it never hurts to have him or Representative Howerlech come forward and give us updates on their positions. So I would encourage them publicly to come before council soon and give us an update on that also. So if there's no further comment, I'll ask for the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes, motion passes. Next are council comments. Any further comments from council this evening? Councilman Hoderick?
Mayor, I had somebody remind me of an issue we had a couple years ago with the local newspapers dropping newspapers on the driveway aprons, which doesn't seem like a big deal until you have a new snow blower and it gets sucked up in there and wrecks it, which happened to several of our residents a few years ago. Do we annually send a letter? And I apologize, this was brought to me right before the meeting. I didn't send in an email or a question, but could we do that again to the papers? I know we can't dictate what they do, but we try to encourage.
City Attorney Bloom?
Mayor, thank you. We have had some complaints referred to us, and this is after a person has tried to contact the newspaper delivery themselves and has been unsuccessful. And so far, we have achieved some success in contacting the newspapers on behalf of our residents. I think it might be a good idea, however, to provide that information for our residents, and perhaps that can be included in one of the publications or can be included on the website, so that the people have that information handy to know who to contact to get delivery stopped.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Mayor Protam Abraham?
Just a reminder that this Friday is the Winter Wonderland taking place on the Civic Center campus. Tree lighting is at six thirty, I believe. I hear Santa will be on the campus. There will be, oh, there we go. I stole your thunder, I'm sorry, Mayor.
You're saving my voice.
Whatever I can do to help out. So, yes, at City Hall at six thirty is the tree lighting. Santa will be there. There will be hot cocoa and Timbits from Tim Hortons at the library. There will be activities for ages up through age five, reindeer and elves, and stroller self-parking. At the Troy Community Center, there'll be activities for kids older than five, they'll be inflatable, and the Snow Sisters, who I hear sing songs from the movie Frozen, will also be there. So if you didn't go last year, which was our first year, it was a huge success. I imagine this year it'll be even bigger and better than ever. Sorry, Mayor.
Perfect, thank you. No, it's, it is our annual Christmas tree lighting, and it's been expanded to the Winter Wonderland. I think it was a great addition last year. It was well-attended. I think it started snowing exactly when Santa came into --
He did?
Came forward. So thank you. Other comments from council? Councilman Hamilton?
Yeah, I was looking through the reports here, and there's a strategies update for -- do we do comments on the reports, or do we do that here?
We can do it either way, whatever.
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, I noticed something very interesting about the strategies updates. On the campaign trail, a lot of people were not happy with the master plan for Rochester Road, is what I heard. And I was encouraged in the strategies update. I already saw that there was an effort to revise some of the zoning and master plan for Rochester Road, including maybe changing the general business district from five stories, which is what allowed that really giant storage unit on Rochester Road to be there, and to maybe readjust that so only two or three stories is allowed on Rochester Hills. So I'm very encouraged that the city is already on top of that. That's something I'm going to talk about in the future a lot more, but I found that very encouraging for people that are concerned with that. And also, they're looking to expand Smart. They have an app called Ride Smart, and they're looking at expanding using a smartphone app for smart buses, so I thought that was very cool, too. So I was, read that, I encourage everyone to read those reports, and I thought that was really encouraging, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments on the reports that were included in the agenda pack? Councilman Pennington?
Yes, I just want to call attention to, actually, one of the letters. We had new election equipment this year, and we had quite a contentious election cycle, and Ali and her staff moved us through everything flawlessly, and I was going to mention this last meeting, but I forgot. I saw the letter and thought it would, good time to bring it up. Great job.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments on the reports this evening? I don't see that anyone signed up for comments on items on and on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy. We do have a closed session this evening, so we will recess in the boardroom for a closed session. Thank you for coming this evening.